Item is public comments, time and place for any comments for any item other than those on a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to address counsel? None seen none, moving on to item five, consent agenda, take motion.
Second.
Discussion, roll call please.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorat?
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is new business under new business action item one, general obligation capital loan notes, item A. It's time to close a regular meeting and open the public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and issuance of not to exceed $500,000 notes. Evidence on the obligation of the city they're under. Ask clerk when the notice was published.
May 25th.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
Like staff to provide a report.
Thank you, Mayor. The council will recall that this looks somewhat familiar in that a couple of months ago you already approved two and a half million. This is the additional 500,000 that through a straw poll with the council. We went ahead and are paying ourselves back for the water purchase that we made for the pass. This will be put together with the 200, 2.5 million and you'll see under item C will then go to $3 million.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against propose authorization of a loan agreement and issuance of notes? Questions or comments from up here? Need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
Second.
Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorat?
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-63 instituting proceedings to take place additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $500,000 general obligation capital loan note.
So move. Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
DeBorat?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-64 directing an advertisement for sale of $3 million, dollar amount subject to change. General obligation capital loan notes, series 2018, improving electronic bidding procedures and official state. Anything to add to this?
Actually, no. We had a meeting today with Moody's. This will be the city's first ever issuance of debt through a agency, a financial agency that will rank us. Having never gone through one of these, I was a little apprehensive, but I understand that Polk City shines very well in comparison to other communities in the state of Iowa and as such, for a good rate. The time is now, the 30, uh, the 30-year treasury bill, while short-term has been fluctuating upwards, trending upwards. The long tail with the 30-year has not been having the same trend. And I think we need to have a very good bids on these bonds. We'll be going to market and results will be at first in the year, or first in fiscal year.
If there's questions, I need a motion.
So move. Second.
Roll call please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorat?
Yes.
Vogel? Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-65 approving construction drawings for the sanitary sewer, well, oats, Oaks flat three. Anything to add to that?
Uh, yeah, it's just the good, the, we have reviewed the construction drawings for all 29 lots, which will actually finish out the rest of 12 Oaks subdivision. However, they were not able to get those addressed, but they wanted to get the construction started, start a sanitary sewer, so they're asking at this time for both sanitary sewer only. They will not start construction however, until we get Iowa DNR for construction. Just gonna get their ball rolling for them.
Questions for Kathleen, I take motion.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorat?
Motion carries. Item three, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-61 authorizing the Polk City Library Resolution 2018-03-L establishing a special revenue fund expendable trust account. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
This is something that I am not sure the city has done here before. However, working with Jamie, Polk City Librarian, the library board, they have received a rather large gift that has certain constraints on it. They want to be able to place that as code states in, um, in the general fund for use at a time and place that meets the requirements of the gift. As well as being able to, be able to get a hold of that when it is necessary. So basically what this resolution does is creates a special revenue expendable trust account in the library's name. It is up to the library to make sure that all of the various requests that are made to go along with this money are met. And in the future, they will probably come to the city and ask for a transfer from this account to do whatever work they're going to at the library. So in a nutshell, within our city budgeting and our city finances, there's now going to be a place that will be called special revenue fund equitable trust account for the library. That will be earmarked and show the 200, excuse me, show the 20,000 or whenever that money is drawn or added to will show that balance.
To that end, before we approve that, I think it's important to note, and Jamie might say anything else here, but just that the donations that came from the Don and Lois Burris state, it's important to thank the people for that donation and obviously longtime Polk City people and very much appreciated, not only from you guys, but from, from the city as well. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I've, stop me where I get into none of my business with the library that will. So you got a donation, there's not a specific need or maybe spend some more time figuring out how do you want to use it? Put it in here, doesn't affect anything from a inner workings on our side and you guys decide when you decide how to use it.
Right.
Okay.
And it allows them to track because there are contingencies built into the gift.
Certain uses.
They need to make sure, right, they need to make sure that they're meeting that, so they really need to be able to track that and this helps them do that also.
Okay, I just want to transition to that.
Is this something that, just out of curiosity, that this fund can be added to down the road if there was another, or is this only for this particular donation?
Yeah, though again, they'll still be able to want to try to track or they'll need a mechanism for tracking whatever requirements are placed on that gift.
Okay.
Yeah, it would help, help them do that.
Uh, once this is established, that'll be there for the future. Take a motion?
So move.
Second.
Need to pick, roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorat?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, Davis Street. Item A, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-66 approving change order number three in the amount of $4,974.75. Comments?
Hey, yeah, this for boring a water service line across Third Street?
Mike?
That's exactly what it is. Um, it was found that it went to this main that was being removed, so we had to put in a new line. We kind of had a 50/50 shot at it and we lost on the 50/50, so.
You mean you didn't have records of it?
Not up there. So anyway, it's, it's a line board underneath the street is what it is.
There any opportunities gained with the work going on the other side of Broadway or is connecting with lines or anything, is that up of the?
No, cause it's, it's actually up about, I think it's three homes up from the new construction, so it really wouldn't.
Yep. Actually going across, oh, it's close, but not close enough.
Right.
Take a motion?
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorat?
Vogel? Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-67 approving partial pay application number two in the amount of $106,335.42. Think to add?
I don't really add, this represents about 17% of the contract.
Take a motion?
So move.
Roll call.
DeBorat?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet? Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries, just since we're past that piece, how's it going up there?
It, it's going, there's, there's been a few problems, but they're working through them, some things in the way, you know, the things you can't see underground type deal. But I think it's moving along fairly good, to be honest with you, as far as the working days and all that, so.
Yeah.
Getting noise from the residents on disruption or they, I know you did a great job communicating ahead of time, just.
Yeah, there have been, there's been a few struggles, but I'll tell you, all in all, it's been pretty, pretty decent to this point. It, yeah.
Worked out very well.
We're in the mud right now, so it's.
Rain's not helping.
I've not heard much complaint from the citizens and I guess, don't want to sound like I'm fooling myself, but I assume that'd be the first period of my career. I have a question though. Where the heck did all that concrete come from this pile?
They have removed some driveways, some ends of driveways, and there is some concrete pipe in there also, but yeah, it's a pretty good mountain up there, isn't it?
I'd be surprised.
Yeah. No, that's from driveways though that they've taken out. There's gonna be more actually, so.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Mike. Number five, East Vista Lake Drive Extension. Item A, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-68 approving change order number two in the amount of $1,695.
Yeah, that's just for adjusting an existing storm sewer manhole.
Take a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorat?
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-69 approving partial pay application number three in the amount of $189,868.21. Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Motion carries. Gary?
I might add, Mayor, that this project, we close to closing out here shortly, punch list items were created last week. This, this project has been one of our smoothest by far.
Helps not to have neighbors.
Other than a farmer.
Yeah, that's right, but at least not in people's front yards. Yeah, the punch list from last Friday was real short too, so it's wrapped up.
Good. Glad to hear that. Item six, consider motion to approve resolution, or I'm, yes, yes, sorry, go.
You might want to flip six to seven because Marlo's here on number seven, he might not want to sit through fireworks.
I like that idea.
His part is that debatable?
Only if you wanted to debate yours.
Oh, no.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm gonna bump you ahead just because you're here.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
I'm sorry, I missed the first.
It was a tough one. So we'll call this item six, seven. Consider motion to approve resolution, third reading of ordinance, 2018-712 zoning. Motion.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
DeBorat?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Could stick around, you don't have to leave.
I'd love to.
I'm sure you do. See you later, enjoy the weather. Item six, seven, whatever you want to call it now, consider motion to approve resolution, I'm sorry, consider motion to approve the first reading ordinance, 2018-800, many provisions regarding fireworks use. So I will kind of give you a little briefing as to why we're here. So following last, uh, meeting two weeks ago when Ron brought it up, um, and we talked about it, Gary and I talked about it after the fact, and honestly, it was kind of an issue of just toying around with some ideas and kind of threw something on Gary's lap, which Gary and staff, I appreciate you guys rushing this and making this happen, getting legal to, to sign off on it. So where we're at and kind of to give a couple of the council members who weren't here two years, or last year is, A, we shouldn't be dealing with this at all to begin with, and that's, I'll just get my dig in real quick again, that the state should never have thrown this in our lap. But since we're here, um, you know, we tried something last year with fireworks on the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, basically, so it was the goal to have Saturday to Saturday regardless of where the Fourth of July fell. And this year's a prime example with Fourth of July following, falling in the middle of the week. So the hope was is to spread it out, here's the noise ordinance, and for the most part, it seemed to work, although it was, you know, kind of loud for that period of time. Other communities made some changes, um, last year, right after the, the Fourth of July. The one thing that we did do that I think was beneficial is that we chose right off the bat to not do them over the Christmas, New Year's holiday, and I know that was taken well. So what we did do here then is we had pretty regular communication between myself, staff, Amy, um, and following and watching what other communities around us have been doing. And quite honestly, we're sitting back and waiting to see if they were gonna make any further changes at the state level, which they did not. What we did do is we did make the changes to our zoning ordinance regarding sale, that did not make any changes to the discharge. So right now, our current ordinance as it stands, um, is you can see that in the ordinance that is there under section one, two, A, um, that does give the except between the 9:00 AM, 10:00 PM on June 30th, first, second, third, fifth, sixth, seventh, and accept between nine and 11:00 on July 4th. And it does give some other stipulations that go along in there. So what we're doing tonight is we're going to allow you guys to make a decision here. And the decision would be one of a, four different changes. And then we will bring forth the corrected ordinance in two weeks and then if, yes?
And that will receive it?
Yeah, and that'll receive its second reading, and in order for this to take effect, any changes that, that are made tonight, in order for this to take effect, we would have to then have a super majority vote on the, to waive the third reading in order to meet the time requirements. Otherwise, our current ordinance as it is right now will stand. So three, uh, the four options that we have are A, make no choice, basic, or make no, no change. Then our options get into looking at what similar communities have done, uh, and that would be making a change to allow discharging between nine AM and 10:00 PM on July 3rd. And, and between nine AM and 11:00 PM on July 4th, again, following the same tran, uh, following the same thing with 18 years old, et cetera, et cetera. Or your next option would be going to a July 4th only provision of nine AM to 11:00 PM, same stipulations apply. Or item C, um, a full all-out ban. I will tell you and what the other communities around us have done, a lot of the metro communities have outlawed, Ankeny has gone to July 4th only.
That's what.
And they stayed that way, they made no change, right? Grimes did tweak theirs and brought theirs down to I think is similar to what we're doing now. There is nothing that will change at the county level, so even if we make changes within the city, just so you know, that, that doesn't mean that it's just going to go away because they can go discharge whatever they want right outside of Polk City. So really what this comes down to, unless I'm missing something, Gary, is that we'd like for you guys to have a open, but hopefully not terribly lengthy debate regarding where we're at in this. I know we've all heard from people on both sides of the issue, there's nobody here tonight, interestingly enough. So we'll see if that changes potentially in two weeks, um, depending on what changes we make. So that being said, do you have something to add?
Just want to add one thing.
Please, that's why we're taking this.
This thing is set up so you can see the regulations that you have now. Or there's three choices. I want you to look at choice C for just accept for just a moment, because the way our regulations read, no exceptions to the regulations means no fireworks.
Yep.
Period.
So we will have to make some changes to our current ordinance because your ordinance now reads as you have it in section one.
Yes, yes.
So we will have to, if you go with C, what will be brought back to you next time is essentially what you had in place before you adopted this miracle.
And that's the reason that we do not have tonight the option to waive second or third is because we're gonna have, if we make a change, we don't know exactly what it was gonna be. So then the, the choice then would be to, to do that with that change before you. But if you don't waive the third reading and if we don't have super majority to do that in two weeks, keeping in mind that regardless of any decisions that we make tonight, um, the current ordinance will stand.
Will stand for this coming year.
So I will start at this end and I will work my way down. Jeff, I'm gonna start with you.
I, I think Polk City and the metro is having a knee-jerk reaction. We've only had one year of legalized fireworks. I think that we're jumping ahead of ourselves. I, I don't think a full-on ban is gonna be fruitful. I think we're going to have fireworks in town being shot off and all we're going to do is cause more heartache for the police department. I, I think that the, the original ordinance we had was, was quite loose. I think we could narrow it down one or two days and be fine. Again, when we get to the summer months, we heard it last night, fireworks going off, it's gonna continue all summer. Ban or no ban, we're going to have it, so I think a day or two is fine.
So you would go, you would lean towards A or B?
I would, I would be fine with A or B. I, I, I'm not opposed of, of leaving the, the current ordinance in place though either, if, if people are okay with that.
Well, I'm, I'm tempted to death that we're doing something. I don't know, except for leaving it the same. I can live with any of the three. I, uh, total ban would be my preference and Jeff says it's gonna been going on, gonna go on, but in experience since last year, I have not had one person approach me and say, hey, we need to be able to set off fireworks on Polk City. But I've had plenty approach me and say, hey, we need a ban, you're, we need something, needs to be changed, you're scaring our dog, you're scaring our kids, whatever, so I don't know. I was elected to represent the people of Polk City and as far as I know, that's how they feel. So my preference would probably be B and, uh, A or B and try it for a year, see if we have to tweak it again next year. Did I say anything at all?
You did, you gave me some options and I'm writing them down. Rob?
I, I, I would be good with A or B. I don't know that it's going to make huge difference and, and I agree with you, Ron, I, I, so I did hear from some people that, that said, keep it, keep, keep allowing us to do it. I heard from a lot more people who said, uh, what you heard, um, that, that we do need a ban or, or more restrictions on this. It's unfortunate that this is the type of thing that the state allowed and is pitting neighbor against neighbor, which I did see. I don't know to the same extent, whatever rule we do is gonna change how many fireworks are set off, in the same sense, how many neighbors are gonna be frustrated with one another and that's the unfortunate piece I, I, so, but I'm, I'm inclined to go with, uh, uh, what is the fourth, is it a Wednesday?
Wednesday.
So.
The worst, let, let, can I just interject something on the fourth, which I think is just unfortunate because most people gotta get up with work the next morning, and that's the one where most, most communities, not only us, uh, would be leaving that, taking that extra hour extension at the noise ordinance, which is squarely, just kind of stinking.
Yeah. I don't know that I said anything worse substantially than Ron did, but, uh.
So far, I'm writing down the same thing that he said, what you said. Mandy, you're new to the table, let's see what you have to say.
No, no, your thought there is, yeah, we'll have to work the next day, rather than go on the third than the fourth, you know, we could, but I guess that the fourth is the holiday, so, um, no, I agree that either A or B would be the best choice for me. What we currently have is a long time, a lot of days, especially for people with kids and again, all the stuff going on, so I'd be good with either A or B.
Dave? We were entirely too gracious last year, it felt even, I felt like it just went on way too, I didn't mind the beginning, you know, up to the fourth, then it was like, it's going, it's like, gosh, you know? So I think if we're, if we're going through all these, I think we have to anticipate there's gonna be fireworks being let off noon on the third and noon on the, I mean, people are, but let's go for the third and the fourth as a, as a option and not restrict it to the point where people can't still, they're still gonna do it, but at least we have a couple of days that are black and white.
And I, and I think again, you know, to, to, to back to your comment is with, with how long we allowed last year, I think as other, every other community did, it's like, hey, let's see what happens because we literally were shoved into a timeframe of, we had three readings to get in in six weeks from the time that the law was put in place because, uh, Randstad didn't sign it till the 11th hour. So, um, I think we tried something and, and what I do hope, in my honest opinion, is, uh, there was a couple things, uh, is that we don't have to readdress this every single, I, I want to get to a point and that this is it, right? You know, I hope that we can just say, it is what it is, we've made some changes and that, and that we as a council are not readdressing this every single year. I also want to say that I do appreciate comments tonight from across the board because if you've been paying attention to other communities in the state, uh, their councils have not necessarily been as nice with each other when this issue has come up, so.
Fireworks over fireworks.
I, I mean, I think it's just kind of a, you just think about people having the rest of the week.
Yeah.
You know, and the day off seems a little bit, you know, let's, let's make it, you know, at least fun and for those that do take that day off or.
And I think you're right, I mean, you know, the majority of people that I did hear from were on the other side of, you know, hey, can you make some changes, you tried something, it worked.
I don't want to overstate it, it was majority anti, but a few pro.
That's who you're gonna hear from, no? Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that's who you're gonna hear from.
Right, right.
Unless.
Which is fine.
You know, maybe this will change it a little bit. The only thing that I would say is, that's heard probably the most passion from you, Ron, so since we need a super majority next time to be able to make any change this year, let's go with whatever, if we can get consensus across the board.
Totally agree.
So we can actually make a change, so I, I'm.
That's why I wanted to make sure you guys understood where we were at with how this had to work because of the timeline, so, and I confirmed, Amy, I had it, uh, so I'm with you, yeah, let's make sure whatever we do here is gonna take place. And to that end, that you guys want to see the waiving of the third reading in two weeks.
Otherwise it's pointless.
Otherwise, yes, exactly.
I, I agree and I appreciate your comments about readdressing it, cause I was sitting here thinking, this is starting to sound like Beggars Night.
We're not going to Beggars Night, Ron.
That is so funny.
We're not going to Beggars Night, regardless of when that holiday falls, man.
We're not shooting fireworks on Beggars Night.
So who's making a motion and which way are we going?
I had one thing.
Yes, please.
Sorry, I don't want to.
Oh, you're good, I appreciate it.
I will say that I think that, you know, a couple day option is good from boots-on-the-ground experience when we had, we had several neighborhood disputes last year during that week, one even escalated to the point of a firearm being involved.
I remember that.
That person and one other person, their comment was, I just couldn't take it anymore, it's been going on for four nights, I haven't slept, my dog's been on four nights in a row, and I just finally couldn't take it anymore. So I do think shorting is gonna eliminate some of the conflict, it also allows me to marshal my resources on a more focused timeframe. I can't have extra officers in, that whole week is not feasible for me, but this will allow me to address the enforcement of it a lot, in a lot more accurate way, a lot more effective way to have it narrowed down to an item two.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we can at least be in the neighborhoods more.
Yeah.
And I can have an extra, you know, part timer on or something out overtime to patrol the areas and to go up, knock on the doors and, instead of having 10 fireworks calls in our queue on the computer, we could have two at a time, you know, where we're getting around in a more effective manner and address some of what's going on. Yeah, actually charging someone. where we're getting around in a more effective manner and address what's going on. Yeah, actually, charging someone, same comments I said two weeks ago, stand. It's, it's not up to us. It's what the, the county attorney and the judges let us do. But as far as us just being present and trying to mitigate some of the, getting there before it turns into a neighborhood dispute, that's my concern.
Yeah.
If someone's disturbed by fireworks, I can't necessarily help that. If there serves a point where they're going to disfide their neighbor, that's where we wanna be able to, to be more proactive in that way.
And I think what's important to note is, we're gonna make a change here. We're gonna tighten on our law, our, our ordinance on this, but that's what we're doing, you know. So that doesn't, I, I mean, I hope, I wish you luck, and I hope that we have a way of being able to, you know, handle these calls. Again, it's unfortunate that we're in this position at all.
And just to say that, that's being discussed statewide by our chief groups.
Okay.
To, to the next step is, how do we become more effective in the prosecution of it? And that's something that's gonna be up and through with the prosecutors of each county and with the department, the, the police departments across the area. More, we're focused on the metro as well, but we have a statewide chief organization that that's on our message boards a lot, is discussion and how to report more concrete ways to help people count what do break this, the ordinance.
Yes, you're gonna start getting more messages on that board soon at the end.
Mine is just really a semantic thing, but I think if I, if I heard right, it was ten PM on one night, eleven PM on another night. So I just wonder from just an ease of everyone's understanding, if we just made it the same time period, which of those days?
I don't think you can under the state law. I'll have to go back and look, but I think that.
There's more time on the fourth. Yeah, it's an extra hour on the fourth.
Yeah, July fourth was given till eleven.
I kinda recall that being the case, that there was a reason for that, because Ankeny went to the eleven. Not saying that Ankeny did it right, but I seem to remember that any community that had him.
Unless you did July fourth back to ten.
Ten o'clock.
Is what you said.
So. See, ten's tough. I mean, really, it gets dark at nine thirty.
I, I, that's gonna go anyway.
It's still gonna do, yeah, it's still gonna do it.
It does, it's early dark.
So are you saying extend the third to the eleven?
I was gonna say, just do eleven, both.
That's, I don't think you can.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that was by state law.
Right? Do you want me to get on that soapbox again about my complaints?
All right, I was trying to make a point.
It adds to the message in the same way that the age, but.
Yeah, I agree with you.
It's not semantics. It, it's substance, but it's. Paint in the corner.
Okay.
All right. With what I've heard from council and staff, I would make a motion to adopt option A for the two days.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion on it, or I'll take a roll?
DeWorren.
Both.
Yes. Sarchet. Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes. And that, part of that motion was to direct staff to put the third, waiving the third reading on the next, yeah.
Yes.
Right? I knew that was.
I was gonna do that in a separate motion.
Okay. All right. Hey, that was easy. Man, I thought that was tough.
It's fun, though.
Fun. That was good. It was easy. It was good. Just wait till the.
Well, and one other thing, have we thought about how we're really gonna communicate this? I'm sure the school that could, you know, knew about the wider window next year. How are we going to?
Soon as we pass it. Cuz we had, we did put together kind of a one-pageer last year or something, so tweak that.
Daniel and I'll get it on website, social media.
Can we pre, can we somehow, beings it is, I know it's not logged yet, right, cuz we haven't approved it. Is there a way to say? Looking at.
It's all the subscribers that are on our YouTube channel that watch it.
No, what you're saying, we wanna get the message out for two weeks from now, so people can come if they want to then, and then get to whatever the result of that is, assuming it follows this path, get it out before the actual fourth legal time window for the display, right?
That's a piece of it, and then just, not even just to get here, but just to have a heads up on what probably, based on what we voted on.
The only thing you could do is just say, get out the word that council's contemplating this change.
Just a quick, yeah, I don't know. I don't know if it's worth.
I'm guessing it'll make the rounds, too, you know, to a certain extent. But I think as soon as we do pass it in two weeks, that we're prepared to kick that out right away.
It'll roll out the Tuesday following if it approves.
Yes, Daniel, you have something to say?
Yeah, just the kinda anecdotal part of it getting poured out. With the things that are, you know, big news like that, that get kinda shared around on Facebook quickly, we've seen that within a week we can reach about, you know, four thousand people on, online and stuff, and that's just on Facebook, so not even the website and all that. So hopefully, even though we're on short notice, it should go around quick. There's a lot of people.
Good to know. Thanks. All right, and then we'll get that word out and get moving on that.
All we have to do is say, Milo, where are you supposed to be?
Oh, God, really? You wanted to go there?
I didn't.
No, for those watching, Milo's not closing.
Otherwise, Mr. Mahan will be answering the phone tomorrow.
Exactly right. So that's a good segue into the particulars, that I would like to thank staff recently for the onslaught of phone calls that they've taken over a couple of issues. But I know you guys took a lot the last couple of weeks, like I said, on a couple of particular things. I know the bridge was a hot-button issue, and I know that it was a challenge, but I would also like to thank you guys for really doing a good job down here, cuz I know you guys took some hits, so. And then the only other thing that I have on is that, as Gary did state, Gary and I had a great meeting a couple of weeks ago here with Mayor Lorenz and City Administrator or City Manager, David Jones, over at Ankeny, talked about a lot of things, a lot of things, a lot of positives going on in both communities. And honestly, something that's gonna be kind of a standing thing with us, that we're gonna get together on a very much more regular basis because of the number of things that impact both of us. You will be seeing a new agreement coming before you, for, before too much longer, that we're working on the current agreement that we have regarding annexation, and we'll see that soon. We're actually gonna extend that north a little ways, but also extend the terms of it. And like I said, and this is, we've been discussing this for quite some time, but just a really good meeting and thank those guys for their time. That's all I have. Anybody have anything else to add to the cause? Ron?
I just wanna say what a good Parks meeting we had last week. Tyler Stubbs from the Department of Natural Resources was here and talked to us about our retention ponds and how he'd like to work with the city on fishing, plant control, water flow, lots of different things. Very enthusiastic and made sure that we knew that he was out there to assist, whatever way possible. And another thing, I'd like to thank the mayor, congratulate him on a good find, Steve Karsten. Did I say that right?
I think so.
For the Trails and Greenway Advisory Committee, very enthusiastic, got a lot of good ideas.
He found me. Let's just be clear. He stopped me and come and go one day, and he just said, are you the mayor? And I said, yeah. And he said, I wanna get involved, you know, so.
Good, a good find. He's, he has some ideas. He wants to go to meetings, and I told him, and he wanted to know background, and I told him that we have, we have done some partial engineering in the past about the connection and that he should start down here and could see what we have so far, and that those would be some tools to take to his next meeting, to show him that Polk City is serious about that.
Gary and I, we're setting up a meeting with him soon to get together and talk to him. I know that was the plan, was to have a meet with Parks, and then we'll be getting together. Thanks.
Yeah.
The photo ops are paying off. People are recognizing. I, I will echo that, too. I actually talked to Steve on, on Saturday for a while, watched an exciting T-ball game. And I, I think it's great that we've got someone as passionate as he is. I, I wanted to foster that and put it in perspective. I don't know if I did either one of those things, but it was exciting that, that he, talking to him, wants to play the long game on some of this. So some of the things that will take long because of all the groups that we have to work with, I think it's gonna really benefit to have him looking at it that way and, and watching the meeting. It was, it was clear that this is a passion, and so.
Good to see you. Yeah, my dad excited, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard from him. Anything to add? Anything to add? Anything to add, Cliff? Anything to add tonight?
No, just gonna sit there quiet.
All right, take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
All right.